Welcome, everyone. Seven o'clock, so I'll call the meeting to order. Ask if you'll join with me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Shirley, would you please roll call the piece?
Kristen Bevel, or, sorry. Can you just turn around?
Here.
Here.
Michael Arnold, Bob Porter, Mindy Yelobin, here. Colganzi, Kristen Bevel.
Here. And I forgot the invocation. Nate, come back.
It's okay.
No, no, come back.
It's still being held.
I'm sorry, I was, I was...
It's still time. I was there. Make up Sunday morning.
Nate, please offer the invocation for us. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Lord, for this time. Thank you for those who have taken on this role. And we thank you for your authority in our lives and thank you for divesting some of that into city government to give the brice to do their job well tonight. Amen.
Thank you very much. Bob Porter. Hello, there. Good to see you. I'm looking now for approval of our agenda.
I move to adopt the agenda as printed.
We have a motion from Larry, seconded by Mindy. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. And looking for approval of our council meeting minutes from September 4th.
I hope that we suspend the rules, waive the reading, and approve the minutes from September 4th, 2025, regular meeting. As said.
We have a motion by Mindy, seconded by Kristen. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. And to our pre-approved reports and presentations now, we have our two SESA representatives here to give us a report, Bob Porter and Tim DeLu.
I defer to our chairman.
Okay, Chairman Tim DeLu.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, Tim.
Thanks for the invite and also thanks for the reappointment.
Yes.
I've had this for the last four years, as you know, were pretty rough. Well, the last couple of the last four years were pretty rough. And happy to report to you that we're doing a lot better. We're back on our feet and moving forward. And that's all with the help of our municipalities and helping us financially, obviously. Our organization struggled a little bit financially and from an operational standpoint with what went on the last couple of years. So we've got our best foot forward now and we're moving on. And we're liking what we're seeing. So, you know, we've got a lot of things happening and I hope that you were getting the documentation, like the annual reports and things like that.
The monthly.
Take a minute to read those because if you see what we're doing, the team's doing a lot of stuff. So we're very positive in moving forward. We, as I said, are financially doing a lot better. We're not out of the woods yet. So we're not taking our foot off the gas pedal yet. But we're gonna hopefully try to settle back a little bit and just regroup and figure out. We've got a lot of things happening. One of the big things is we just took a contract with Wassa Memorial. It's a three-year contract to do transfers out of the hospital. So we're a dedicated unit for the hospital. That's looking, we're very early into it. We just started in June. So we're only three, four months into it. It's been very promising. But it's a short-term contract to start just to make sure things work out. So we're gonna move forward with that and hopefully that helps us as well as well with the stuff that we're bringing to you guys from a financial standpoint. So as I said, we're probably gonna take our foot off the gas pedal for a minute. So you're probably gonna see some additional increases like we've done in the last couple of years. And that's just to get rid of some of the dilapidated equipment that we just weren't able to weed out financially. You've probably have seen some of the rigs in town are borrowed rigs occasionally. We've got some agencies around us that are helping us because some of our equipment just goes down two or three units at a time. We just don't have enough ambulances to support that. So Langsberg has been gracious. Mesa South has been gracious to lend us rigs when we need them. So that's the reason they're in town is just to pick up the slack in the ambulances that we have that are currently getting old and causing a lot of maintenance and cost. So happy to answer any questions? I don't know if I want to add anything to...
No, we're just a little bit on the equipment. The reason we're borrowing things, we have our newest ambulances dedicated to Memorial right now. But then we have another one, Rechassis, is doing fine. But even those broke down a couple times. Brand-new vehicles. But our older ones, I mean, one of them in particular, I think it's nine. We've put like $23,000 in that in the one year in repairs. So that's why we need to swap these things out. They just can only last so long. Or it starts costing you more money than it's worth to keep it up. So that's our biggest challenge right now is trying to replace.
Yeah.
We got in a hole and couldn't replace them. So now we're having to try to dig our hole and dig out of that hole and replace them sooner than we had hoped.
And we're also working with our local representatives to try and help us out with some grant money. You know, some of the stuff that they get from the local communities. We're all the time applying for grants through the things, through the fire service and the DNR, things like that. There's a bunch of grants that they offer. They're not big grants, but every little bit helps. So the guys are working hard trying to put those together and get them in and try to recoup some money that way.
I do have a question. Do you still have the same number of municipalities that you had been serving?
Yes.
Because I know there was some talk about getting agreements signed. And I didn't know if they all got signed.
Yeah, we did lose a portion from the EMS side in Shalawsi Township. That was the only, it was a small portion of Shalawsi Township that we covered. We did lose that. But that's technically the only municipality that we had lost. Anything else?
Anybody have any questions?
Nothing good.
All right.
Appreciate getting us on track.
Yeah, yeah, we're very excited about...
We're actually moving.
Getting us on track and doing that all the time by responsibility.
You're welcome.
And I know what you're...
I guess I knew I had one, Tim. Excuse me. Just speak to staffing a little bit. I know there have been some ups and downs relative to staffing.
Yeah, that's one of the shortcomings we had operationally several years back. And the management team have worked really hard. And now we have a list that we're actually pulling from. When we need people, we're actually pulling from the list where we didn't have anywhere else begging people, right? So so there just was, when something happened, somebody moves on, we go right to the list and, you know, work on that list to try and bring more people in. So at times in the past, we had ambulances out of service because we didn't have the personnel to cover it. And now we do not have that problem. And again, we have a long list of people that are waiting to get out. So we're trying to get out. Thank you.
I think that's a huge...
It is a huge thing, right? Manpower is a huge thing when you run a service 24/7, 365, right?
I think it probably says a lot for the way the work is going, the way everyone is...
Yeah, the organization...
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we're vertically aligned with the current staff and we're just doing a super job and we're moving forward.
Well, we want to thank you and Bob, of course, for serving on the SESA board. You have been invaluable to that board in helping to turn things around. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, Tim.
Is anyone here for public comment? Seeing none. Shirley, do you have any communications?
I do. I received letters of intent to update master plans for Perry Township and Woodhall Township. So we received those. We're gonna be updating their master plans. The Electoral Inspector John Keach sent an email. Dear City of Perry, I am resigning as an electrical, as electrical inspector from the City of Perry because I am moving out of state. I enjoyed my time serving as your inspector, but as of September 1st, 2025, I am resigning. Thanks, John Keach, Electrical Inspector. So he's resigned. He has, Rob has found a replacement. Nick Youngman started mid-September, I think, probably. So there was kind of a little gap in inspections, but we got it taken care of, so.
Good, thank you.
Just a couple of...
Okay.
The last Historical Society Market, or what's that called? Farmers Market, October 18th, 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. And then I also handed out recycling news from the Greater Langsberg Recyclers. I'll talk about other stuff later. That's it?
That's it. Thank you very much. We have our department head reports. John, would you like to go first?
Good evening. We don't really have anything special other than we're doing our regular stuff and we did make a run with the leaf fact Wednesday. And we're just keeping, moving on. I don't have anything special to report. I have a couple of meetings next week. So probably the 1st of November, I'll have some more reporting.
Maybe you could update council on the status of our DPW crew. We have one that's off and will still be till November?
Yeah, another, probably another four or five weeks from now. Before we know anything.
Okay, the other thing, maybe, John, this is a reminder. I think the plan is to have a couple of the waste management dumpsters next Tuesday and Wednesday, Tuesday and Wednesday for the city.
Yep, so Wednesday will be our late date till 5:00, I think we put. And everything should be posted on the city website. And there's, it's probably in the board out front.
It's on Facebook, too. Any questions for John?
Thank you. Thank you, Sean.
Hello?
Hello.
Summer taxes reduce September 30th. We have collected 91% of the summer taxes from our residents. Residents can still pay those outstanding balances with the city until the end of February. A 1% penalty has been applied to those open tax bills. I have been in contact with Clark Schaefer, our auditors. They were waiting on the actuary report from Watkins Ross. That was delayed because I didn't get them the data they needed until the week the auditors were in the building. So that's the last piece that the auditors need to give us a draft. So I believe our contract said we would have a draft back October 1st. But this delay is not their fault. So it's, they have everything they need as of Friday last week. So I would expect to see a draft probably before our next meeting. We met with OHM, which is the contractor for the capital improvement asset management plan earlier this week. So they have now finished their studies of the sidewalks, the roads, and the buildings. The water and sewer infrastructure was part of the other grant through the SEDP. So work is, I feel, I believe the field work for the most part is wrapped up. Now it's just recording. We did see drafts of the building plans. We also received our first installment of grant funds that are helping pay for that study a couple of weeks ago. So we'll get another payment when there's a draft. And then you get your final reimbursement from the grant when you have a finished improvement project, which I believe OHM is shooting for like the end of November. That's all I have.
Any questions for Megan? Thank you.
Thanks.
The only thing that I have is I'm gonna report that we had 30 building permits. I'm not gonna name them all like I did last time. But we had 30 building permits last quarter, 10 zoning permits last quarter. If you guys wanna know what they are, you can see this paperwork. But then I also secured the facility for our annual Christmas party this year. Not Christmas, it's not gonna be Christmas. It's gonna be a play appreciation dinner. And everybody has received their invitations and they've all gone out in the mail. So November 21st, I believe it is, at Brookshire, Goff Course in Williamston. So that's really all I have. You took the fall cleanup stuff from ESO.
Any questions for Shirley? Good job, thank you.
Thank you.
Evening, everyone. I am kind of in the same boat as John. I don't really have a report except for I wanted to hand these out and explain a little bit about the traffic, the speed traffic sign. I say traffic because it's really cool and how it records volume of traffic. Thank you. Okay, so on the page with the blue and black picture on the right, mainly, I printed this off so you could take a look at the graph down at the bottom with the red line, green line, orange line, and yellow line. That red line is basically 85% of traffic going by that sign. And it is below 37 and 1/2 miles per hour in a 35, 85% or so. There are some exceptions and I can probably name them. I could tell you the date and time potentially because we don't always go 35 when we're going lights and sirens by that sign, nor does the ambulance or the fire truck. So there are exceptions. But 85% of traffic is going below 37.5 miles per hour. And the reality is if you look up in the overall study section, it's, the average speed is actually 36.5. So I was encouraged by that. I really think that's not too bad considering they're coming from the highway, coming off of Langsberg potentially, coming from a 40 mile an hour zone down. And by the time they hit that sign, they're going pretty darn close to the speed limit. So I was happy to see that. If you look on the back side, I have two charts that are side by side. The first on the left is July 29th to August 12th. And it gives all the speeds and volume from midnight through 11, 24 hours, basically. So on the right side, you have September 9th to September 23rd. And if you look in the categories on the, up at the top from like 46 to 50 in the blue and then 51 to 55, look at how much those numbers have decreased in just a couple of months.
Was the first column, July 1, was your test, quote unquote?
No, the sign was on.
It was on?
I believe it was on during that time.
It's effective, isn't it?
So I saw a lot of effectiveness with that. So granted, we still don't want those numbers. 50 to 55 in a 35 is not acceptable. But you gotta consider, too, those numbers are over a two-week time period. So that could be an ambulance. It could be a fire truck. It could be a police car going by.
Or it could be that truck that I saw.
That one, yes.
That was speeding up as he was going toward the sign just to see how fast he could get it to...
Yes, he probably wanted his picture taken because I do have the ability to take the picture. Unfortunately, the camera is terrible and it doesn't provide me anything to fly out to see who or what vehicle was going that fast.
Yeah, that's great.
So I just wanted to throw those at you. I've been able to play with that a little bit and figure out some reporting options, what that looks like. And then I figured I could provide that to you folks as well.
Very nice.
Any questions about that at all?
Thank you.
Just a question, Kyle. Where is your next targeted location? Or do you have one decided on?
I got a couple of options. I haven't quite decided yet. But we'll figure it out. And what I'll probably do is I'll get the same complaints that I got initially, that the sign doesn't work and you need to fix your sign. I'm well aware of what my sign's doing. Display will probably be off for all speeds. I can set it to come on at certain speeds. It can come, it can come on and flash at certain speeds. If I get it off this M route, I believe that I can turn the blue and red strobe on. I don't know if that's effective if somebody subconsciously thinks they're getting pulled over because they see a blue and red strobe on the sign. But it kinda makes me laugh.
It'd be kinda cute if they pulled themselves over just because it went on.
Smile, take a picture. Give me your license plate. Yeah, that'd be fun. Any other questions?
Any questions, anybody? Okay, thank you.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. The only report I have is I just wanted to update you on the potential buyer that we have for the vacant lot down on South M52. They are performing their due diligence. I've not heard anything from them as to whether they think they're gonna be able to move ahead with their plans or not. So they have until October 30th to complete that or close or withdraw. So I'll let you know, wanna hear anything. Committee reports. We do have a personnel committee report.
I'm gonna read what I handed to you because that way I stumble on everything. So Personnel Committee met on September 29th. And we met to discuss the need to create a part-time position for a DPW laborer. Superintendent John Sauer has received a few applications for a laborer, but none have a CDL license. It takes several months to acquire the license. And John will continue to work on getting a candidate for full-time position. In the meantime, he has a candidate who is experienced with DPW work and has a CDL, but needs a part-time position. This position will pay $20 per hour, no benefits, and will work no more than 37 and 1/2 hours per week average within a 90-day period. Due to the short staffing situation, it is extremely important that we create this position so that our DPW can continue to provide the outstanding service our community relies on.
Thank you, Mindy. So there's our personnel report. Gives that so far, as we go into our new business, that is an item on our agenda. But next on our agenda is, did we have any other committee reports?
I'll just comment that the ordinance committee will be meeting next Thursday, October 9th, at 10:00 AM here in Council Chambers with the focus on just discussing some issues and questions that have come up around enforcement of a couple of our on-the-books ordinances.
Thank you. Presentation and approval of the bills.
I love that they approved the bills without a parent's interference.
We have a motion from Bob, seconded by Mindy. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. We don't have any old business. So moving into new business is the impossible approval of the Personnel Committee's recommendation to create a part-time DPW laborer position. If anyone has any questions regarding the need for that, John is here to answer your questions. Mindy or I, we attended the Personnel Committee, so we could certainly try. But I think John's your best bet for good information. So does anyone have any questions or wanna open the discussion in regard to this matter?
I move that we accept and adopt the following resolution. Whereas the City of Perry Personnel Committee has recommended creating a part-time DPW laborer position, whereas it is further recommended the position will maintain an average of less than 37 and 1/2 hours per week over a 90-day period as stated in the Personnel Policy. It is further resolved that based upon the recommendation of the City of Perry Personnel Committee, the position will pay $20 per hour due to the candidate meeting qualifications of holding a current CDL driver's license. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the City of Perry does create a part-time DPW laborer position, which will maintain an average of less than 37 and 1/2 hours per week over a 90-day period as stated in the Personnel Policy. The pay for this position will start at $20 per hour based on candidate qualifications and current CDL license.
Second. We have a motion from Larry, seconded by Mindy. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you Personnel Committees for getting on that so quickly as we needed, needed that. Moving on to new business number two is a resolution regarding the public employer contributions to medical benefit plans. This is something that we have talked about, discussed in past every year for the last five that I know of. Any discussion on that resolution?
I move that we accept and adopt the following resolution. Whereas the Publicly Funded Health Insurance Contribution Act, also known as Senate Bill Number 7, is passed by initial legislation signed by Governor Snyder on September 27th, 2011. And whereas although law imposes a maximum that public employers may contribute to the employee healthcare cost, it also provides a mechanism for the cities and other local units of government to opt out of the Act's requirements, Act's requirements, for one-year period by a two-thirds vote of the City Council, allowing the city to determine on its own how much it contributes to employee health insurance without reference to hard caps or the 80/20 plan in the Act. A new two-thirds vote would be required to extend the exemption in each subsequent year. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Perry Council shall opt out of the requirements of the Publicly Funded Health Insurance Contribution Act, also known as Senate Bill Number 7, for the coverage, I think this was for a year, January 1, 2026, through December 31st, 2026. Also a resolution, excuse me, and parts of the resolution in so form as they conflict with the provisions of this resolution be and they, that hereby are rescinded.
Second.
We have a motion from Bob, seconded by Larry. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you for that. Is there any other business to come before the council at this time?
I have just, I asked Shirley, should we have to do this? But for five years of it, I counsel we've always set hours for turn-of-day.
We're gonna talk about it next week.
Okay. Just figured it's October, we finally set it up. Okay, that's fine.
Yep.
Doesn't matter to me.
That'll be an agenda item for the next meeting.
5:05, 5:10, it's fine.
5:01 to 5:02.
2, hey, got it wrong, wait.
Well, give that more thought and we'll talk about her at the next meeting. Anything else? Anyone have any other items to go on the agenda for the next meeting? Any other public comment? Tim, have you... Tim, have you heard any of the businesses down in your neck of the woods there going to do anything special for Halloween like they've done in the past?
I have not heard, no.
Jacob hasn't said anything to you about that either?
Nope.
Okay, just curious. Thank you. Council, any other discussions or observations you'd like to make?
I kind of would like to thank John and the guys at the DPW, because I know you've struggled with being shorthanded, and you've done a wonderful job keeping us going. Thank you.
I agree.
I know it hasn't been a very easy thing. Hopefully, it's resolved soon.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. And your guys, thank your guys. Anybody else? Well, here we are, 7:31, meeting adjourned.